I bet Marty could do this change.
I have to say return myself.
Gray, you're coming in and you're registering. It's all up for sale.
You got the agenda there?
Too much. And all this drawing is done one day, yeah.
Sure.
And you know what? It's just, it's a lot of...
Thirty-two minutes.
That's all.
That's it.
Need to go behind him or the chair like Joe Biden, like John Boehner worried about every facial expression. Can we imagine that?
I don't know, kids, you ready to go?
Yes, sir. Not in. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'm going to call the city council meeting of January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen to order. Son, would you please call the room?
Kenyon.
Here.
Hetty.
Here.
Tennant.
Here.
Schopmeyer.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business we have tonight is the state of the city addressed by myself. So, in accordance with that, this is our, my yearly state of the city address, so I'd like to start by saying, ladies and gentlemen of the city council and my fellow citizens of Fayetteville, I am pleased to report tonight that the state of our city is sound. Working together through a tough period of economic uncertainty and reduce revenues, we successfully kept our eyes on the stars and our feet on the ground. Attending to the basics while keeping in mind who we are and what we want to become as a community, we worked in the spirit of Alvin Toftler, who reminded us always to think about big things while you're doing small things, so that the small things go in the right direction. Our success has been the result of a strong partnership built on mutual trust and a shared vision between my administration and our city council. I want to take this opportunity to express my personal appreciation for the outstanding service of council members Brenda Boudreaux, Bobby Farrell, and Sarah Lewis. Each brought distinct talents to our enterprise, while presenting unique perspectives and varied views. They understood the fundamental difference between policy disagreements and personal animosity, always willing to listen and learn from each other in a spirit of friendship and cooperation. As we welcome our new members, Sarah Marsh, Marty Schopmeyer, and Alan Long, I commend your legacy to you as you begin your first term of public service on the city council. We have and will continue to work together to take care of public business, to wisely manage our resources, to provide essential services, to assure a vibrant community, and to offer the promise of a brighter future for all of the people of Fayetteville. I'll be discussing several topics tonight, and the first topic we will discuss tonight is sound management. I'm happy to report that the financial condition of the city is sound and that a balanced budget has been presented and approved for two thousand and thirteen. We met a balanced general fund budget for two thousand and twelve and did not require the use of any reserve funds, marking three years in a row in which the city of Fayetteville operated without having to use our reserve funds, our current expenses, for current expenses. Consequently, the city's general fund reserves have been restored above the amount they were when I took office four years ago, and we are now in a strong position to meet any unexpected economic fiscal crisis in the future. Our dedication to fiscal responsibility and public accountability achieved these results without any tax increase during the last four years. We initiated a lean government program that helps increase efficiency and reduce the future need for additional personnel. This achievement both directly improves customer service to our citizens and allows existing staff to serve an ever-growing customer base. Our dedicated city employees have met this challenge, and I sincerely thank them for their outstanding service to the people. Our efforts to address the challenges and offer practical solutions have been and will continue to be grounded in a common sense approach, defined by Harriet Beecher Stowe as seeing things as they are and doing things as they ought to be done. Now that we have balanced the budget and restored the fiscal integrity of our city government, we can actively pursue our dream for an even more vibrant city in which to live, learn, work, play, and raise our families. The next topic I want to address tonight is public safety. No government function is more important than assuring the public safety of our citizens. And I commend the courage and commitment of our dedicated police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians. Although our population has grown by thirty-five percent, about thirty-five percent since two thousand, our crime rate is down fourteen point seven percent during the last four years. While our fire department responded to more than eight thousand calls for service and emergency incidents this year, there is not a single fire death in our city. In two thousand and twelve, our police department received national accreditation from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, which strengthens accountability, facilities, continued professional excellence, develops community-agency relationships, and creates a forum for law enforcement and citizens to work together to prevent and control challenges. Through the leadership of the Fayetteville Fire Department in two thousand and twelve, our city was certified as a Fire Wise Community USA by the National Fire Protection Association. We have dramatically improved our emergency communications with a new citywide radio system necessary for safe, efficient, and coordinated responses that are critical to protecting and helping our community in a time of need. We began participating this year in SMART nine-one-one, a free confidential service that allows citizens to create a safety profile online that can include photos, parental emergency contact information, and other pertinent data. This safety profile is automatically displayed to nine-one-one responders during emergency calls and can help save lives. We have increased our hazardous materials response capability, and we will establish our own hazardous materials operations team in two thousand and thirteen for such emergencies and other environmental incidents. Among the proposals we have recommended to state legislators are bills to prohibit cellphone use by drivers in school zones during school hours and for state law to allow workers' compensation insurance to cover first responders' work-related mental health injuries. Next topic I want to cover tonight is transportation. During the last four years, Fayetteville has been a leader in planning arterial roads with medians, bicycle lanes, sidewalks, and green space, such as the current projects for widening Crossover Road, Garland Avenue, Huntsville Road, and Cato Springs Road. Construction begins this year on the seventy-one B Flyover Project to alleviate traffic problems and provide more convenient access to the uptown business district, and we completed the preliminary design for extending Van Ash Drive from Gregg to Garland. Other projects scheduled from the existing street bond program include restoration of historic bridges on Maple and Lafayette Streets and continuation of College Avenue improvements with sidewalks, tree planting, and street lighting. Our vision for convenient and sustainable transportation, however, is much more than traditional highways and includes alternative transportation as a keystone for our future. During two thousand and twelve, we added a hundred shared lane markings for bicycle routes and constructed more than twelve thousand feet of sidewalks, including the enhancement to College, Mountain, and Center for the walkable environment envisioned by the downtown master plan. The proposed two thousand and thirteen construction sidewalk construction plan identifies twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven feet of citywide sidewalk projects. We completed the Meadow Valley Trail in two thousand and twelve, and the Fayetteville Multi-Use Trail Network was voted the best municipal trail system by readers of Cityscapes Magazine. In two thousand and thirteen, we will see the most extensive trail construction in the city's history. Expanded mass transit must be and will be part of our future transportation system. We have continued our partnership with Razorback Transit, providing free transportation for city residents, and ridership has increased on the Ozark Regional Transit Routes. I've been the advocate for a regional light rail study by the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission, and I will continue to encourage an expanded regional mass transit system. As part of our larger vision, we will continue our leadership and participation in the Fort Smith Fayetteville Alliance to pursue enhancements to the McClellan-Cur Arkansas River Navigation System by deepening and widening the channel and managing the flow to accommodate larger barge loads and increase utilization of river transportation and rail connections. Success in this project will mean long-term economic and environmental benefits to the two cities, the region, the state, reducing both transportation costs and cutting carbon emissions. With regard to planning our integrated transportation system as well as other aspects of our vision for a sustainable future, we will continue to be the most innovative city in Arkansas. Next topic I want to discuss tonight is the environment. The people of Fayetteville have continued commitment to a clean environment. We will carry on our work to be good environmental stewards and further partnerships that leverage environmental progress. In two thousand and twelve, Fayetteville became a National Wildlife Federation Certified Community Wildlife Habitat, the first in the state of Arkansas. We became the first, and still the only, city in Arkansas to pass the two thousand and nine International Energy Conservation Code for residential structures. We also replaced and restored three hundred yards of the White River Stream Bank in two thousand and twelve alone, reducing over four hundred and fifty cubic yards of sediment with over three hundred and thirty pounds of phosphorus that would otherwise continue to enter the White River annually. We completed the pilot dredging project on Lake Sequoia for what could be the largest phosphorus removal project ever performed in the White River. We completed construction of our bio solids facility, and we began selling dried Class A bio solids and turning landfill waste into a reusable product. Our Bio Solids Initiative and Facility won the Arkansas Business two thousand and twelve City of Distinction Award in the category of Green Energy Conservation Initiatives. We are not only diverting loads of product from entering a landfill, this program saves the city from paying landfill fees for the disposal. We are implementing alternative fuels such as propane and biodiesel in our fleet and equipment. The Fayetteville Police Department is testing two hybrid-type vehicles for non-emergency purposes, and we will increase the use of these energy-efficient vehicles for non-emergency police work if the test results prove positive, and I expect they will. Fayetteville is now an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, and in two thousand and twelve, Fayetteville received five blooms from American Bloom, the highest number that a city can receive. Fayetteville was honored with the Tree Growth Award from the National Arbor Day Foundation, making that five years in a row, and we celebrated seventeen consecutive years of being honored as a Tree City USA. We will continue our successes restoring native grasses in Fayetteville, such as the restoration of the native grass prairie at Lake Fayetteville along the historic Butterfield Trail. In two thousand and thirteen, we will continue with the building of our urban forests and work to fulfill the goals of the Tree Canopy Coverage Assessment. In two thousand and twelve, we distributed more than six hundred free trees and shrubs to residents to plant on their property to help reestablish our city's urban forest and the planting of a hundred and sixty-two trees in street rights of way as part of the Tree Preservation and Protection Ordinance, which will also reduce stormwater peak flows and air pollution, increase oxygen supply and property values, provide wildlife habitat, and beautify neighborhoods. We replaced the inefficient light fixtures in the city municipal parking deck on Meadow Street with sixty-seven watt LED fixtures and light sensors on the first and second levels. This year, we will redesign center medians in the municipal parking lot west of the bank of Fayetteville to catch runoff waters and help self-sustain the new trees that we will plant. We again encouraged our state legislators to file and support property-assessed Clean Energy Bonds legislation and renewable energy feed and tariff legislation, or what we refer to as PACE and refit. Next topic I'm going to cover tonight is our community. We live in Fayetteville, love Fayetteville, visitors come back or stay forever, and Fayetteville is known nationally as the city in which our people are our prize. Over thirty thousand Fayetteville residents donated over five hundred and fifty-seven thousand hours of volunteer work last year, making Fayetteville a Volunteer Community of the Year in the state of Arkansas for the fourth consecutive year. Community volunteerism has benefited Fayetteville's economy, its creative economy, its historic preservation economy, the green economy, the tourism economy, the local foods economy, our transportation economy, and its health economy, and helped assure that Fayetteville is a beautiful and thriving city. Many did so by not taking time away from their families but integrating the family in volunteer activities. Fayetteville Forward volunteers continue to contribute to our community, and they dedicate their actions to building Fayetteville's economic opportunities and future in an inclusive and innovative way. Our city is sound because we have active and successful partnerships with the outstanding institutions that are an essential part of the fabric of our community and help define who we are and provide additional opportunities for success. Fayetteville Public Schools are the best in the state, again named to the list of higher-performing schools in Arkansas by the National Center for Educational Achievement, and for the fourth consecutive year were named to the top ten digital school districts in the nation. Academically, Fayetteville led the state in the most advanced placement students, national merit semifinalists, and national merit finalists, while thirty-three students were selected for the Arkansas Governor's School. Whether winning the Odyssey of the Mine tournaments, literary awards, Quiz Bowl, state math awards, all-state honors in band and choir, winning state championships in football, volleyball, cheerleading, and track, or a student-produced film being named the Best Youth Film at the two thousand and twelve Little Rock Film Festival, our other successes, students in our public schools excel, and the city values our relationships with the school board and the public school administrations as well as other partnering, as our partnering on other projects that benefit Fayetteville and our people. We also value our productive relationship with the University of Arkansas, an essential part of our community, that will soon achieve its goal of becoming a top fifty public research university. Our relationship has been enhanced by the formal creation of the Town and Gown Advisory Committee, composed of city and university officials and citizens from each ward. Exciting work of the UA's Arkansas Research and Technology Park resulted in Fayetteville winning the two thousand and twelve City of Distinction Award in Technology Advancements. The ward exemplifies the vision we share with the university to make the Arkansas Research and Technology Park a dynamic environment where innovation can flourish. The nationally recognized Fayetteville Public Library was again named the best library in Northwest Arkansas by Reader Polls in both Cityscapes, Metro Monthly Magazine, and the Arkansas Democrat Gazette. The American Library Association's Library Design Showcase presented three awards to the new Ottwell Teen Library. There are now more than sixty-seven thousand registered users, and two thousand and twelve circulation surpassed one point one million items. Sixty-three thousand people participated in library programs in two thousand and twelve, and Summer Reading Club was the largest ever with four thousand participants. The library's Project Fayetteville added over a thousand Fayetteville items to the Digital Photograph Archive. The Fayetteville Stories Film Festival resulted in new works about our history, and our public library encouraged, sponsored, and premiered the Fayetteville Documentary Up Among the Hills that was narrated by President Bill Clinton. We are fortunate to have this outstanding facility in our community to inspire imagination and foster learning, an information resource open to every resident without charge. I'm looking forward to participating with the board, staff, and community in developing plans for future expansion of the Fayetteville Public Library. The Walker Park Senior Citizens and the Wellness Center received the therapeutic award from the Arkansas Recreation and Parks Association. The Weddington Corridor Neighborhood Plan was approved by the city council earlier this year. The first stage of the plan process has been completed with a successful week-long public design charrette, and we are finalizing the report from the public input sessions. Our community is coming together in support of local foods and urban agriculture policies and ordinance to encourage sustainable and compatible urban agriculture, food production, and distribution within the city, and this year I will propose that this council support such legislation. More of our community garden program is a proven success. The Walker Park Community Garden expanded the number of plots and gardeners in two thousand and twelve in conjunction with the construction of a deer fence and designated water supply. These additions enabled gardeners to utilize thirty-eight garden plots for personal use or to grow food to be donated. The Jefferson School Community Garden had another successful year with all nine plots utilized. There's always something fun to do in Fayetteville. Fayetteville is where memories are made, and this is certainly the case again with our city's recreation programs. The youth spring soccer season had an increase of twenty-two participants from last fall. The total number of participants for two thousand and twelve was over twenty-seven hundred players, and Fayetteville has the largest youth recreation soccer program in the state. Youth softball continues to have impressive growth with four hundred and forty-six participants last year. The adult softball teams had over two hundred and fifty teams in the spring, summer, and fall leagues with over thirty-one hundred participants. The Fayetteville Adult Softball Program has more teams than any other program in the state. In two thousand and twelve, all available field space was filled with forty-eight adult co-ed kickball teams playing in our summer and fall kickball seasons. Wilson Park was awarded the best public park by Cityscapes Magazine, and Gully Park was The Wilson Pool had twenty thousand five hundred and seventy-eight visitors this past summer, and four hundred and eighty-nine people participated in swimming lessons at the pool. The Dive-In Movie Series sponsored by the Fayetteville Firefighters Association was a great success, with one thousand two hundred and three people attending the four movies. Five hundred and five youths participated in our B Active Camps, and an estimated seven thousand people attended the sixth Free Gully Park concert. The Wyvon Richardson Community Center continues, the Wyvon Richardson Community Center continues its growth and improvements, boasting well over twenty-five thousand visits in two thousand and twelve. Fayetteville acquired new parkland in two thousand and twelve. We repaired the Wilson Park Pool. We constructed Saint Joseph Park. We engaged in the Lake Sequoia Boat Ramp and Courtesy Dock Project, and we are moving forward on regional park development. In two thousand and thirteen, we will renovate the Wilson Park Swimming Pool Building, Walker Park Concession Stand, develop the Mount Sequoia Gardens, move forward on the regional park development, and make improvements at the Wilson Park Tennis Course. This year, we will begin construction on the Dixon Street area parking deck. This administration has proposed to our state legislatures the filing of permissive legislation for regulating booting, the same enabling rights the state gave the city of Fayetteville to regulate towing, and in the historic downtown square area, we will move forward on an Arkansas Entertainers Walk of Fame. We've also seen great strides in our city animal shelter. In the past year, we broke our adoption, animal adoption record from the year before and placed over two thousand four hundred and fifty pets in new homes. The city council passed a microchip ordinance that has helped us limit the number of animals that end up at the shelter by getting many dogs and cats directly to their homes. Ranger's Pantry distributed eight tons of dog food and two tons of cat food, enabling two hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-three dogs and three hundred and three cats to remain in their homes. We continue to decrease the animal euthanasia rate, which is at twenty-three point eight percent compared to thirty-five point eight percent in two thousand and eleven. People donated seven thousand volunteer hours and fifty thousand dollars to benefit the animal shelter in two thousand and twelve, and we constructed eight new playyards. The city of Fayetteville also was the recipient of the two thousand and twelve Governor's Work-Life Balance Award in the Large Nonprofit category, the first city government entity in Arkansas to win this award. Farmland Trust awarded the Fayetteville Farmers Market the designation of the top farmer's market in the nation. Kiplinger listed Fayetteville as number five in best cities for mid-career professionals. The National League of Cities selected Fayetteville as one of the top twelve cities in the nation, highlighted in the NLC two thousand and thirteen calendar with Fayetteville landing the October feature month. And as Parade Magazine recently announced, American Bloom awarded Fayetteville the prestigious designation as the most beautiful city in the nation among cities in the population categories of fifty thousand to one hundred thousand. Fayetteville also received the American Bloom Heritage Preservation Award, and this award beautifully states, "Heritage encompasses a broad field, but in the case of Fayetteville, the most powerful expression of heritage awareness is in their trail system." The trail system in Fayetteville easily threads the needle of history. The stage route of the Butterfield Trail, the sadness embodied in the Trail of Tears, and the Civil War routes through this community all make the trail system a heartfelt reminder of the history of this region. We are a historic city, a vibrant city, a beautiful city, an artistic city. We are a historic city, a vibrant city, a beautiful city, an artistic city, environmentally aware city, an academic city, and we all feel a special connection, a bond to our city and to each other. We will continue these successes, and we will make expansions such as with the Wolsey Wet Prairie Sanctuary. We will build more community gardens and city parks. The public schools will continue their community garden successes, and we will have new city tennis courts and soccer fields by 2014. We will enhance our public education program on recycling with the Marion Orton Environmental Education and Recycling Center, which honors Marion Orton for her service as mayor and as a private citizen who started Fayetteville's first recycling center. From 2010 to 2012, Fayetteville added 1,775 new jobs and 570 new businesses. This year, we plan to continue that job and business growth with the additions of 200 new jobs per year. Walton Arts Center will expand by 2015, and the downtown Dixon Street Entertainment District Municipal Parking Deck will be completed by 2015. We've started improvements on the city's industrial park, and we'll be installing new city wayfinding signage. We will continue our expansion of open government and active citizen involvement in public policy, and continue to be the most innovative municipal government in the state. We will continue our strong partnerships and working relationships with the Fayetteville Public Schools, the University of Arkansas, the Chamber of Commerce, the Northwest Arkansas Labor Council, Northwest Arkansas Cities, Washington County State, and Congressional legislators, and community organizations. We will continue to help assure Fayetteville maintains its national standing as a top least expensive place to live in the United States and a top place in high quality of life categories. We will continue to attain the best for our community and the best in ourselves. As William Jennings Bryan stated, destiny is not a matter of chance, but of choice; not something to wish for, but to attain. We're not merely here to hold an office. We are here in order to empower the people of our community to live a better life with greater vision, with a sense of hope, and with the chance to achieve their dreams for themselves and their families. We are here to enrich our community, and we impoverish ourselves if we forget our errand. So let us rise our sights and see the possibilities. Always see them, for they are always there. Let us be daring and assert our integrity of purpose and imaginative vision against the commonplace and the ordinary. Then let us work together, the mayor, the city council, and the people, to translate our shared vision to the reality and to assure that Fayetteville will continue to be the most interesting, innovative, and vibrant city in Arkansas. And in closing tonight, let me share the wisdom of Henry David Thoreau. If we advance confidently in the direction of our dreams and endeavor to live the life which we have imagined, we will meet with success unexpected in common hours. Let us join in seeking our dreams for Fayetteville, making these uncommon hours, and sharing that success with every resident of our community. Thank you. Let's give a round of applause to the folks that did the pictures tonight. Okay, moving right along. On the Consent Agenda, and there will be more reading for the mayor. Number one, approval of the January 3, 2013 City Council Meeting Minutes. Number two, bid number 12-57 Williams Tractor. Resolution pursuant to bid number 12-57 authorizing a contract with Williams Tractor Incorporated in the amount of $24,900 for the purchase of one round baler for use at the Nolan Wastewater Treatment Facility and approving a budget adjustment. Number three, bid number 12-63 Hillbill Sales Corporation Arkansas. Resolution pursuant to bid number 12-63 authorizing a contract with Hillbill Sales Corporation Arkansas in the amount of $39,690 for the purchase of one in dump hauler trailer for use at the Nolan Wastewater Treatment Facilities and approving a budget adjustment. Number four, bid number 12-77 Turex Equipment Sales. Resolution pursuant to bid number 12-77 authorizing a contract with Turex Equipment Services in a total amount of $83,284 for the purchase of two Ford F-250 crew cab pickup trucks for use by the fire department. Number five, bid number 13-02 Reflectorized Paint Markings. Resolution awarding bid number 13-02 and authorizing the purchase from Asphalt Striping Services LLC for reflectorized paint markings in variable amounts for the Transportation Division as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number six, bid number 13-03 Construction, curb and gutter. Resolution awarding bid number 13-03 and authorizing the purchase of curb and gutter construction from Sweetser Construction Incorporated as a primary supplier, and Thomason Asphalt Company Incorporated the secondary supplier, in variable amounts and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number seven, 13, bid number 13-04 Hillside Gravel. Resolution awarding bid number 13-04 and authorizing the purchase of hillside gravel from Les Rogers Incorporated for variable unit prices and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number eight, bid number 13-05 Concrete. Resolution awarding bid number 13-05 and authorizing the purchase of concrete from Toon Concrete Company as primary supplier, and Beaver Lake Concrete Incorporated as secondary supplier, in variable amounts and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number nine, bid number 13-06 Truck Hauling Services. A resolution awarding bid number 13-06 and authorizing the purchase of truck hauling services from Les Rogers Incorporated and S&amp;R Trucking in equal amounts for variable unit prices and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number 10, bid number 13-07 Aggregate Materials. Resolution awarding bid number 13-07 and authorizing the purchase of aggregate materials for varying unit prices from various vendors as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number 11, bid number 13-09 Drainage Pipe. Resolution awarding bid number 13-09 and authorizing the purchase of drainage pipe for varying unit prices from various vendors as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number 12, bid number 13-10 Crushed Rock Salt. Resolution awarding bid number 13-10 and authorizing the purchase of crushed rock salt from North American Salt Company in the amount of $73.76 per ton, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2013. Number 13, bid number 13-11 Screen Topsoil. Resolution awarding bid number 13-11 and authorizing the purchase of topsoil from Les Rogers Incorporated in the amount of $10.74 per cubic yard in variable amounts and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed in calendar year 2013. Number 14, Landers Toyota of Little Rock. Resolution authorizing the purchase of three Toyota Tacoma compact pickup trucks in the total amount of $69,875 pursuant to a state procurement contract from Landers Toyota of Little Rock for use by the Water and Sewer Division and approving a budget adjustment. Number 15, Vale Chevrolet of Little Rock. Resolution authorizing the purchase of seven police package Chevrolet Tahos in the total amount of $245,651 pursuant to a state procurement contract from Vale Chevrolet of Little Rock for use by the police department. Number 16, Ozarks Electric Cooperative. Resolution authorizing the transfer of an easement interest to Ozarks Electric Cooperative on certain city-owned property in Veterans Park to provide for a relocation electrical utility service. Okay, I need a motion and a second.
I move that we accept the...
I have a motion and a second to accept the Consent Agenda as read.
I'll second.
Sundar, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, we have nothing on our unfinished business. Under New Business, number one, 2012 Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality E-Waste Grant. Resolution authorizing acceptance of the 2012 Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality E-Waste Grant of $25,000 for an e-waste coupon redemption program and approving a budget adjustment. Right?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff brought this request forward in September, and the state of Arkansas, Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality is ready to release the funds for this grant, which we're pretty excited about. First of all, it's not a matching grant, so that's great. We get some money to do this program. And I was so graciously given the opportunity to come and present this tonight, but it's a good thing because we want to get this information out to the public and let them know how they can participate, why it's important for them to participate, and how they can participate. So I put together a couple of slides. I want to take a few minutes to go over those. First of all, what is e-waste? The industry calls it e-waste. I would prefer to call it e-scrap because e-waste has a negative meaning to it as it's not, you could throw it away, it's not useful. But there is, there is use in this e-waste. Things that we are wanting are computers, cell phones, televisions, stereos. So why is it important to keep this stuff out of the landfill? Well, first of all, there's lead, mercury, cadmium. There's things called brominated flame retardants in the plastics. All of that stuff, when it goes into a landfill, over time can leach into the soil and into the water and eventually cause issues down the line. Even though our landfills are lined, this, over time, could cause a problem. So it's important to keep this material out. The landfill itself has banned these materials. So in Tawnytown, if you try to take e-waste, computers, TVs, monitors, they won't accept them. So we have to have programs in place for us to recycle that. And the county, Washington County, has a household hazardous waste facility which accepts e-waste. That facility is open from 8:00 until 4:00, Monday through Friday, and if you bring a unit to them, you can get it recycled, but it costs you $5. So, actually, I'm getting ahead of myself. The last thing about this is the value of e-waste. There is a lot of value in e-waste. As you can see there, in 2010, you had $6.8 billion of value in the e-waste recycling and reuse services, and it's only increasing. It increased 10% from the year before, so this coming year, 2012 and 2013, we can probably see an increase as well. Don, if you can hit the next slide. So what are we trying to target? Computers, monitors, CPUs, speakers, TVs, VCRs, printers, copiers, scanners, microwaves, which is very good to get rid of those, home stereos, handheld devices, PDAs, iPods, CDs, DVDs, videotapes, cell phones. Washington County said that they will accept, if you bring a box like a paper, like a copy of a paper-sized box, full of these small items, they usually charge $5 for recycling of those. So we want the residents to know that they can take these items down there with these coupons, which these coupons will be printed as soon as we get this approval, probably in the first part of February. They will be made available for like the mayor's table at the Farmers Market, for the ward meetings that you guys can have to hand out. Any other public meetings, they'll be available at the Solid Waste Division. We can probably make arrangements to maybe have them up here at City Hall if we can arrange that as well. But the public can come and get that. It's only for Fayetteville residents, and they can use that $5 by going, that coupon, and going down to the site at Washington County and redeeming that coupon and recycling the e-waste. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
What questions do we have, Council? Okay.
Mayor, I actually have a question that's not exactly on point, but my wife asked me about the fluorescent bulbs that we have, the compact fluorescent. They're not supposed to go in the regular trash either, are they? What are we supposed to do with that?
No, sir, they're not. Actually, Washington County has that facility, that program for the fluorescent bulbs, and I'm glad you pointed that out because the other piece of this is it will help bring awareness to those services that Washington County has. Like I mentioned earlier, their site is open from 8:00 until 4:00, Monday through Friday. They're open the first Saturday of each month from 8:00 until noon. They are located over by the Washington County Jail. So they have a wide range of time that people can drop off those items. But bulbs, batteries, paint, pesticides, all that type of household hazardous waste, you can take to that facility and drop it off at no cost. And that's for the whole, just for people in all of Washington County, not just in Fayetteville. So it's important, through this program, we'll be driving people to that facility that can learn more about the services that Washington County has for household hazardous waste. Because unfortunately, e-waste, household hazardous waste is a growing segment of our waste stream, and we hope to have programs in place to manage it correctly.
Okay. Ron?
I don't really have a question, but I'd like to say thank you again, Brian. I think a program like this, that is an all-encompassing program of education for our city, has to be, has to come from the top. And Brian's work in solid waste has been very much noticed, but I know that Don and Mayor Jordan have led this, but so have our citizens. And I'm proud of the interaction that Ward Four has had with you all. You all went door-to-door, and that was a very good experience for a lot of our Ward Four citizens who learned questions like Ted just asked. They could ask you in person what to do with their recycling and with their waste. Some of you may have seen on 60 Minutes last week, there was a whole section on illegal e-waste dumping. And so thank you, Mayor, and Brian, and Don, and all your work, and people like Louise Mann from Ward Four who have pushed on us to be educated and very aware of what happens to our electronic waste as well as our, as pushing our recycling program to be the best it can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. I will point out that door-to-door survey that was done in August in Ward Four, like Rhonda mentioned, it is actually on our website. The results of what we found, if you go to the website, accessfayetteville.org, go to the Solid Waste and Recycling page, on the right-hand side are some big colorful buttons, and the last one, which is purple, you can punch that on and you can find out what we found out about that door-to-door campaign. So in closing, I also want to just say that we do have a lot of education and marketing plans for this year. We're going to be bringing that to you at some point in the future for an agenda session and explaining what we're doing and what we have plans for. We will have a logo and a mascot identified. We've got some, a little bit of progress on that. We're not ready to say anything yet, but I think it'll be something that you'll be proud of, and it'll portray the recycling program in a positive light.
Mark?
This came before the Water Sewer Solid Waste Committee, and we did request a presentation this evening, and of course, it was human absolutely supported. So thank you again from the committee, Brian, for the work that you've done, and thank you for coming this evening to, again, let individuals know what we can do with this e-waste.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Any public comment on this? So now I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to pass the resolution.
Said.
A motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments? Sundar, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number two, asphalt...
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number two, asphalt materials. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding during calendar year 2013 for the purchase of asphalt materials for use by the Transportation Division but requiring informal quarterly bids or quotes. Kit?
Whereas the crude oil market continues to experience extreme price volatility, and whereas this volatility has increased the price of asphalt, making normal competitive biddings unworkable, impractical, and not feasible. And whereas the Transportation Division proposes to solicit and accept bids on a quarterly basis without the need for further approval by the City Council through the calendar year of 2013. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that such circumstances constitute an exceptional situation where annual competitive bidding is not deemed feasible or practical, and therefore, through calendar year 2013, waives requirements of formal competitive bidding for the purchase of asphalt materials and authorizes the Transportation Division to solicit informal bids or quotes on a quarterly basis without the need for further approval by the City Council.
Chair?
Yes, Council and Mayor, this is just continuation of a program that we've done for the last three or four years. Once we got in, in the past, we would bid it once a year, and the asphalt companies would honor those prices. We've got into situations a few years ago with the volatility in the market that they were coming back to as wanting to change the prices, and we have that built into the contract based on, on the oil price. So by doing this, it has satisfied that issue for them. They're more likely to, all the companies in the area tend to bid on it. We, we suspend the formal bidding, but we still bid it on a quarterly basis. This is just allow us to go ahead and do that through purchasing without having to come back for approval four times during the year. And you're seeing the same thing, that we still take the low bidder each quarter. So that's kind of a summation of what we're asking for.
Questions we have for Terry on this? Okay. Okay. What public comment do we have on this? See now, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding during calendar year 2013 for the purchase of asphalt materials for use by Transportation Division but requiring informal quarterly bids or quotes.
Any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number three, refurbished hazmat truck. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with beverage, body, and trailer service in the total amount of $65,974 to purchase a refurbished hazmat truck for the fire department, approving a budget adjustment. Kit?
Whereas the Fayetteville Fire Department is forming a joint hazardous materials response team with the Springdale Fire Department in order to enhance response capability of both departments. And whereas, in order to standardize the city's hazmat response vehicles and equipment, the Fayetteville Fire Department would like to purchase a refurbished response vehicle with a similar setup as the City of Springdale's hazmat response vehicle. And whereas a vendor has been located which recycles beverage trucks into hazmat response vehicles, add a substantial savings for the city. And whereas beverage, body, and trailer service is uniquely qualified with the complexities of a hazmat incident response from their experience in providing this service, and they have a proven history of producing high-quality products. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract with beverage, body, and trailer service in the amount of $65,974 to purchase a refurbished hazmat truck for the fire department. Section 2, the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby approves a budget adjustment, a copy of which is attached to this ordinance as Exhibit A.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. As you all know, in December, you all passed a ordinance authorizing our withdrawal from the regional hazardous materials response team, including the startup costs associated with forming our own hazmat team. This is part of that process. We have, the Fayetteville Fire Department has joined with the Springdale Fire Department in forming a two-tiered hazardous materials team, I guess you could call it, and this will enhance the response capabilities of both departments. And this truck is an effort to standardize our hazmat response vehicles and equipment with the Springdale Fire Department so that our personnel on scene, whether it's in Springdale or in Fayetteville, whichever vehicle they're working with, they can go right to the equipment they need for mitigating whatever material it is that they have. Both trucks are set up identically with the compartment storage space and scene lighting, and they have a huge PTO-driven generator on both trucks that's the same in the same place. They have, they recycle these with adjustable shelving so that we can put what we need in the storage compartments of the trucks. The biggest complaint over the years of hazmat teams is not having enough storage in their vehicles that they take to the scene. So this approach, using the recycled beverage truck, should address that. And a new hazmat truck unit is between $200,000 and $300,000 if we would buy a new one. So Dennis, out at the shop, agreed to, let's see, what these'll do. This particular truck is 90,000 miles, has 90,000 miles on it. It's a 2001 International Beverage Truck, 10-foot long, and ought to do the job for us for years to come. The, the purchase of this beverage truck was approved by the Equipment Committee on December 27th. The funding is included in the approved 2013 budget. It'll come from our Act 833 grant money that we get through the state. And the budget adjustment is higher than the amount you see here in the ordinance to provide for sirens and emergency lighting and decals for the, for the unit. We're not planning on painting ours yellow like Springdale paints their fire trucks. Our fire trucks are red like they're supposed to be. That's, anyway, we support passing this ordinance. Any questions? Pardon me?
We get a red one, not a striped one.
We'll get a red one. It may be a white one, but it's not going to be a yellow one.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay. We'll bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with beverage, body, and trailer services in the total amount of $65,974 to purchase a refurbished hazmat truck for the fire department and approving a budget adjustment.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number four, amend 173.08 Energy Conservation Code. An ordinance to adopt the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential construction projects, including thermal and lighting efficiency standards as required by ACA 15-10-205 by amending 173.08 Energy Conservation Code of the Fayetteville Code. Kit?
Whereas the Arkansas Legislature has authorized the Arkansas Energy Office to, quote, "promulgate reasonable rules for the purpose of, A, implementing and prescribing enforcement for thermal and lighting efficiency standards for new building construction," and subsection B, "requiring a city or county that issues building permits for new building construction to adopt the Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction." That's ACA 15-10-203, subsection B.3. And whereas the Arkansas Energy Office has promulgated the 2011 Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, and required cities that use, that issue permits for new building construction to adopt the 2011 Energy Code for new commercial and high-rise residential construction. And whereas the City of Fayetteville does issue such building permits and therefore must adopt the 2011 Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, and whereas pursuant to ACA 1455-206 and 207, the City of Fayetteville has published notice in the Northwest Arkansas Times that the City Council will consider enacting an ordinance to adopt and require that all new commercial and high-rise residential construction must comply with the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, and whereas pursuant to ACA 1455-206 and 207, the City of Fayetteville has published notice in the Northwest Arkansas Times that the City Council will consider enacting an ordinance to adopt and require that all new commercial and high-rise residential construction must comply with the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, three copies of which are available for public inspection and review in a Fayetteville city clerk's office. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal Section 173.08 Energy Conservation Code, subsection A, Commercial, and enact a replacement A, as shown below. Subsection A, Commercial and High-Rise Residential. The 2011 Arkansas Energy Code, as promulgated by the Arkansas Energy Office, is adopted as required by ACA 1510-205B3 as applicable to all new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, unquote. Section B, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby divides Section 173.08B6 appeals into subsection A, which includes all current language, and enacts a new subsection B, as shown below. Subsection B, the Board of Construction Appeals shall hear any appeal from the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code interpretations by the building official as called for in Section 108 of that code.
Peter?
Evening, Mayor, Council. As you heard during the Mayor's State of the City address in July, the city adopted the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code for residential construction. Passage of this ordinance this evening would do two things for the city. It would bring us into compliance with state statute, as Kit mentioned, and then it would also bring our commercial and high-rise residential construction requirements up to the same standard, standard that our residential construction standards are for compliance with that 2009 Energy Conservation Code. So basically, we have a level playing field, less confusion for contractors across the board. We have adopted the 2009 Energy Conservation Code for basically all construction within the City of Fayetteville.
Peter, basically, I think this is something that the state has passed that we are basically...
Yeah, we are mandated to.
We're mandated to pass.
That is accurate.
Okay. All right. What other questions does council have for you? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? All right. See now, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance to adopt the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential construction projects, including thermal and lighting efficiency standards as required by ACA 15-10-205 by amending Section 173.08 Energy Conservation Code of the Fayetteville Code.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance to adopt the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential construction projects, including thermal and lighting efficiency standards as required by ACA 15-10-205 by amending Section 173.08 Energy Conservation Code of the Fayetteville Code.
Any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance to adopt the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential projects, including thermal and lighting efficiency standards as required by ACA 15-10-205 by amending Section 173.08 Energy Conservation Code of the Fayetteville Code.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number four, amend 173.08 Energy Conservation Code. An ordinance to adopt the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential construction projects, including thermal and lighting efficiency standards as required by ACA 15-10-205 by amending 173.08 Energy Conservation Code of the Fayetteville Code. Kit?
Whereas the Arkansas Legislature has authorized the Arkansas Energy Office to, quote, "promulgate reasonable rules for the purpose of, A, implementing and prescribing enforcement for thermal and lighting efficiency standards for new building construction," and subsection B, "requiring a city or county that issues building permits for new building construction to adopt the Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction." That's ACA 15-10-203, subsection B.3. And whereas the Arkansas Energy Office has promulgated the 2011 Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, and required cities that use, that issue permits for new building construction to adopt the 2011 Energy Code for new commercial and high-rise residential construction. And whereas the City of Fayetteville does issue such building permits and therefore must adopt the 2011 Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, and whereas pursuant to ACA 1455-206 and 207, the City of Fayetteville has published notice in the Northwest Arkansas Times that the City Council will consider enacting an ordinance to adopt and require that all new commercial and high-rise residential construction must comply with the 2011 Arkansas Energy Code for new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, three copies of which are available for public inspection and review in a Fayetteville city clerk's office. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals Section 173.08 Energy Conservation Code, subsection A, Commercial, and enacts a replacement A, as shown below. Subsection A, Commercial and High-Rise Residential. The 2011 Arkansas Energy Code, as promulgated by the Arkansas Energy Office, is adopted as required by ACA 1510-205B3 as applicable to all new building construction for commercial and high-rise residential structures, unquote. It's my pleasure tonight to tell you that you cannot pass the resolution I handed out at the agenda session, because it's only for nine hundred thousand dollars plus possibly another thousand, hundred thousand in the demolition costs. Instead, now we have two offers, one from Come and Go and one from Casey's Marketing Company, which is doing business, I believe, is Casey's General Store. Let me hand out a revised resolution with the offer from Come and Go for one million dollars for the sale price plus a hundred thousand dollars in demolition costs and all the other site sort of agreements that we have with them, the cost share of the roads and that sort of thing. I think they will have a presentation later on to show you maybe what they would envision the site would look like if they were awarded the contract or we agreed to their offer. And we also received from Casey's Marketing Company a million dollar offer, and let me hand that out also. There's a resolution that would approve Casey's offer. It's the same offer of approximately a million dollars, or not of a million dollars, not approximately, a million dollars in sale price plus up to a hundred thousand dollars or twenty-five percent of our demolition costs of the Tyson factory, whichever is is less. And we're not sure exactly what it would cost to demolish the factory, but I'm sure that you realize that what, one thing the city is going to do is, is not only demolish the factory, but we are going to attempt to reuse portions of the demolished factory, the cinder blocks, the cement, crush them probably onsite, and then be able to use them as base materials for road construction or driveway construction on the site or elsewhere within, within the city. So those are the two actual resolutions that are before you tonight, and I think that we have both groups here. I see both groups out in the audience who will probably wish to give a presentation to you. The staff was happy to recommend the initial nine hundred thousand dollar offer plus a hundred thousand for demolition, and we're even more happy to say that, well, this is now up a hundred thousand dollars. Basically, almost the exact amount that we paid for this property when we first bought it about eight years ago. I'm aware, I guess you're aware that through passage of time, there's been vandalism to the site. Wires have been stolen, it's been very difficult to secure so people can't get inside, it's got some dangerous in it because of pits and darkness, and so it's been a, a kind of a problem for us for the last few years, and I think that is one reason that the administration was happy to see such an offer, because this is a kind of a blighted area, and it's a blighted area owned by the city, so we're hoping that maybe this will be the way to resolve this issue. I don't have anything else, but I'm surely available to answer any questions, and I'll turn it back to you, Paul, or the mayor.
Sure.
Kit, we have another memo from you detailing the options we have tonight. There's a third option here to table this, and you talked about soliciting sealed offers from Come and Go and from Casey's. Can you describe this?
Yes, you know, I tried to figure out what options you all might have. First option obviously would be to accept Come and Go's offer of a million dollars. They have a signed agreement that is, that I just handed out. Second option would be approve and the Casey's Marketing Offer for a million dollars, and there's a resolution I've handed out with that. So you could pass either one of those resolutions and effectively approve the sale tonight. The other thing is, obviously, we have two fairly identical offers. Both of these corporations are well-known and respected corporations that do quality development. There are examples of their development in Fayetteville for, for Come and Go and in Washington County and Benton County for both Come and Go and Casey's, so that they have established themselves as, as viable developers who present a quality product when their development is, is finished. So that makes it a difficult situation when you have identical offers, so I thought you might want to look at a potential third offer rather than trying to make a decision tonight. And that would be where you would table the resolution and authorize both parties to provide a sealed offer to sweeten or improve their offer so that the decision of which purchase offer is best for our citizens and city would be made at the next city council meeting, which is February fifth, three weeks from tonight. This sealed offer would be to improve the current offer and should be delivered in a sealed envelope probably to me at no later than four P M. on the February fifth, the date of the meeting. I would not unseal this offer. I would not open the offer until we reached this particular agenda item on, on new business during your city council meeting, and I would then publicly open the offer and read it to you and then give the offer to our clerk as our official records custodian. The sealed offer would only include whatever enhancements in price over and above the current offers that either Come and Go or Casey's General Store would wish to make. Oh, in other words, wouldn't be a full new offer. We have good offers from both of them now, but if they want to enhance that, if they want to say, well, we'll give you the, you know, fifty bucks more, this enhancement could be nothing. They could not, you know, they could give me a sealed offer, be zero. That just means they're standing on their current offer. Or it could be any amount of additional money that the company wishes to make. I would think that there should be something that we should not allow, and, and so I would say that no language to the effect that the company would match or equal the other company's final offer would be considered or have any operative effect. So, you know, if they don't want to raise their offer, that's fine, but they shouldn't just say, we'll match whatever the other person says, because I think we, we deserve, the citizens deserve, our taxpayers deserve, the very best final offer that these corporations might be willing to make. The city council then, of course, could consider both final offers, and you determine what is the most advantageous for our citizens and city of Fayetteville, but we would not allow further offers to increase or match a competitor's bid, so that would be their final offer. There's also a provision that I, I put in here that maybe there's a third party that might want to get involved, and we don't want to close the door. If another party wished to submit its offer for this property, it must notify the mayor's office no later than four thirty P M. on January twenty-eight by providing a signed land sale agreement in the form as agreed by both Come and Go and Casey's Marketing Company in an amount of at least a million dollars, which is what they have offered. So if another entity wished to match that, they could do it by submitting it to the mayor's office no later than January twenty-eighth, which is almost two weeks away, but it gives us a little bit of time to run due diligence and make sure this is really a valid offer from a company that has established its financial and commercial ability to develop a good business on this site. So we wanted a real offer and not just some offer that might be illusory. We have two good offers we know about, and so if we get a third offer, I want to make sure it's a good offer too. And that gives us a little bit of time to look at the company and do our due diligence that this is really a good offer. If, if that company, if it did, a third party would step forward, then they would have the same right to provide a sealed final offer for the amount in enhancement of what they would have already made the offer on, and they would also be in the running if they wanted to do that. We have not heard any indication that there would be a third offer, but I wanted to leave that option open in case some other party would develop. I can tell you that the expansion into Northwest Arkansas for new convenience and gas stores has primarily been Casey's and Come and Go. They have many new locations here expanding through this area. They seem to be the major players, and that's why it's very understandable they're the two before us tonight. But I did not want to close the door if there was potentially a third viable option. So anyway, that's, that would be the third option. I, I do think that we have representatives down here. I know that Come and Go's representative has come down from Iowa to do a presentation. I think they ought to be allowed to do at least a partial presentation tonight, even if you do want to table it for later. I think that you probably ought to kind of see what, what some of their proposals are beyond just the money and what you can read in, in, on the offer, a purchase, but if you do want to table it, then this would be what I would suggest, but of course, it's clearly up to you, and you all decide exactly what you want to do.
Well, council, shall we start with the presentations unless you want to discuss this, this stuff?
I would just like to clarify that if we went with option three and tabled the resolution, would we still then, after seeing the final offers, have the ability to turn them all down if that's what...
Certainly. No one is requiring the city council do anything, but you have every right to either pass or not pass resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
I think it is important for us to consider tabling this, because this is an important piece of property, and it's evident that there is interest, and so we do need to look at this deliberately and with as much information as we can have in front of us rather than something that's immediate. So that's why I would encourage the tabling of this, because I think that we all recognize that this is an important piece of property owned by the city, but it's also an important to, for us to recognize it's a, it could be a liability. So if someone steps forward to help resolve the liability, we, we certainly have a deep appreciation for that also. So I, I would certainly encourage us to consider the resolution to table this.
Now, let me ask the council this. I'm sure Come and Go has a presentation they'd like to present. Do you want to, do you want to make your motion to table now? Do you want to wait? Do you see the presentation?
Do we have a representative from Casey's also?
Yes, both, both companies have representatives here and are prepared to give a presentation, although I will say Casey's has come a little bit late to the game, so they don't have as much of a presentation now, but I do think that they have some presentation they'd like to give to you.
And I will certainly open it up for public comment if someone else has some sort of presentation they'd like to make as well tonight. Fair enough.
Yes.
Yes.
I would support seeing the presentations, just because I think it would give us an opportunity to give them feedback so that they might have an idea how they might want to sweeten their offers.
Absolutely. So, yes.
Well, I feel like I might give a presentation in, what, three weeks? My name's Rob Wildley with Come and Go, sixty-four hundred West Town Parkway, west Des Moines, Iowa. I am with Come and Go. I want to thank staff first of all, and then planning commission, and then city council for that awesome site that you helped us design over there on MLK and Hill. We love that location. It's a pretty store. I hope everybody's been there to see it. So I want you to maybe think about a little bit more than the money. I know, I know we're apples to apples with the money. Kit did it well, did a, did a good job explaining that. We build LEED certified stores, which cost a little bit more money. We built forty-three stores this last year, and all of them are registered to be LEED, so we're just waiting for the certification to come out, just like the one we have on Township and MLK. I do have an engineer here where we put together a landscaping plan and our site plan, so if we could show that, and I don't know how we can show it. I guess we, we have a, was it eighteen by eleven? Maybe we could pass it around.
You could do that, and of course, you might be afforded an opportunity at the February fifth meeting also, and you could bring a drive in, and we would be able to display it for you. Same thing for Casey's.
Gotcha. So...
I really would like to see the eighteen and a half eleven.
Oh, sure. We're talking about that, but he wants to probably make another presentation.
Oh, yeah. Mine's pretty short. I, I've told you guys all about Come and Go in the past, half of you anyway. Welcome newcomers, anxious to hear about your vision later on. Like I said, can I approach you? Can I hand this to you? While I'm talking, then you guys can... So a little bit more about Come and Go. Like I said, half of you probably heard this, just stick around for me if you would. We are a family-owned company. We give ten percent of our profits back to the community, which is pretty important to us. We have, we built, like I said, forty-three stores last year. We, we divested twenty-one to Casey's and then seven to Circle K last year. They were kind of the smaller, older assets in a rural community, and we, we didn't think about, our thoughts on putting three million dollars in a rural community just didn't make economic sense. So we're trying to actually lower the median age of our stores, and to do that, you either have to rebuild or divest, so that's where that came. Let's see, is there anything else I want to tell you before three weeks? I'm afraid I'll be up here again. We've been working on this project for, I expressed interest about probably a year and a half ago, so we had contractors walk through there and prepare a demo bid and present it to the city. We've also had our engineers with the guidance of staff look at some alternatives to this development and make it so it's, so it's a nice place for a convenience store. It's just, yeah, I get a little emotional about it because we got a bid, what, a day ago, so we've, I feel like we've been working on this for quite a while, and then we're getting outbid a day, day before council, so. I will ask, I will answer any question. I do have a LEED, I guess, I, we have a sustainability manager actually on staff, and he printed off a document for me about our LEED certified, LEED certified stores, if you're interested in hearing about that.
What questions do we have?
I would like to hear about...
Would you like to hear about? Okay. So we have seventeen LEED certified stores, so that's, that's the bottom level, level of LEED. Does everybody kind of understand what LEED is? Okay, so it's kind of green, it's good for the environment. Four of those are silver, so that's a step up. And so we also have twenty-eight more stores that are open and submitted, awaiting certification. Nineteen more stores under construction will be submitted, and Come and Go is the first and only C-store in the LEED volume program, which means, you know, mass quantity of LEED stores. We're trying to make all of our stores LEED. And your store that we have, our store that we have, our joint store that we have, I guess, MLK and Hill, that one is submitted, and it's not quite finalized, but we, to date, have never been denied a certified or a certification to middle. And we plan to build thirty more of these LEED stores next year, so we're hoping that this location will be one of them.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me if, on your LEED certification, if you pursue sustainable sites, credit eight, which is a lighting pollution reduction?
If we, one more time?
Are you being awarded Sustainable Sites Credit Eight, which is light pollution reduction?
You know, I don't have the answer for that. I can, I'll check it out, though.
If you would please. And I'd also be interested in stormwater runoff as well.
Okay.
There are two sustainable sites, stormwater credits.
Okay.
I'd like to know about.
And, you know, our site plan, so it's been passed around there. We can work on screening, landscaping, screening, whatever you need for the neighbors. I know sometimes there's neighbors that don't want a convenience store next to their house, so we can shield that if we need to.
And in fact, I think you have done that. I saw your buffer areas that you did, and, and the back of the building in response to our requests has not got a lot of openings, windows and stuff that would shine out toward the residential neighborhood. So they've already taken some steps like that. We have those, those landscape stuff. We didn't realize that they would not be able to show them, and we can get those to you through the city clerk's office. We have all of those that their engineers have provided us. I'm, I'm sorry we didn't get them to you before this evening. We just got them recently, but we thought that, that they would have them tonight, and so we will give them to you.
We've done. Sander did.
I can tell that you are making a good faith effort to meet our community's needs and desires. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you. You said that ten percent of the profits go to the community. Could you be more specific? Does that mean ten percent of each local source profits goes to the community in which it resides?
Actually, I don't know the answer for that. I know it just, it gets distributed different ways. I, I don't know if it goes exactly ten percent of this community this year, and then the next year it goes to a different community. I don't, I don't think we break it down that way, to be honest.
So I know that that would make a difference for me if you could guarantee that ten percent of your source profits went to Fayetteville.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, and obviously, so we, we've probably talked about this in our last two stores, but we do have a local, well, we have a local to Iowa general contractor that does all of our work, building our stores, but literally eighty percent of the work comes from of our, of the building cost itself goes to local contractors. So I, I feel that's very valuable.
Question?
Yes, Ron.
After the store is completed, how many employees do you hire? And what are, can you talk a little bit about your employment practices? Do you have a manager and then all part-time staff, or do you hire full-time people with benefits or...
Good question. So I actually asked operations this two days ago, and usually it's between twenty and fifteen staff, and half of them are full-time, half are part-time. We do have a manager onsite, and then we have a sales manager as well, and then we have a supervisor in this area. I don't know if you've ever met Mark Myers, he's, I'm sure he's tried to show up before these city council meetings, but he supervises all those managers. And then we have a divisional vice president from the corporate office that comes down, and he, he supervises, I believe it's ten or twelve supervisors. So we try to keep operations intact, follow the same plan that the SSC, which is our store support center, we try to keep everything kind of brand standard, and, and that was part of our divest, is we want all these five thousand stores, we want a bunch of these LEED certified stores so that when you, when you go to town... you go to Township, and then you go to Township, and then you see our convenience store up on Hill, that you want to go to Hill to get the same thing you have at Township, so it's very important to us that we have a brand standard, so.
Another question, yes.
A recent study on transportation in our region showed that 97 cents of every dollar we spend on fuel leaves our state economy. Can you tell me what percentage of your sales come from fuel versus other items?
See, it's pretty close. Here in northwest Arkansas, it's different in different MSAs, but in northwest Arkansas, I feel it's almost a wash. It's about 50/50. 50% of the cost of fuel, so our inside sales matches basically the cost that we sell outside. Does that help?
So you're saying that you're selling enough soda and cigarettes to offset the 16 bays, I believe you have, of fuel sales?
Yeah, MLK and Hill. Yeah, fueling locations, yes. It's pretty close. It's different, though, like I said, so that's more company-wide, but it's pretty close. We might be a little bit heavy on gas, but it kind of depends on the price of gas, too.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I understand we have a representative from Casey's. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Larry McCready, and I am a lawyer here in Fayetteville with the law firm of Reese Moore Pendigraft, and we represent Casey's General Store. I guess I want to first start out by apologizing sort of for our late entry into this process. Casey's just recently found out about this opportunity, and it was last week, and they moved quickly to try and get an offer together, and given the size of their company and the turnaround in which they were able to accomplish that, I hope we'll at least speak to the seriousness with which they view this opportunity and their interest in the opportunity. And I also apologize, we don't have a representative from Casey's to be here. The short notice prevented that from happening. If I can, I just want to take a minute or two, I'll tell you a little bit about Casey's and a few interesting things that I think are worthwhile pointing out. Casey's is a Fortune 500 company. It's a publicly traded company. It had about $5.1 billion in total sales in 2012. It has a total of about 1,700 stores nationwide. It started in Iowa. That's, the Midwest is sort of its main footprint of stores, and it entered into the Arkansas market in 2011 with a store in Bella Vista. And currently, there are 18 locations that are either up and running or under construction in Washington and Benton County, and that includes one location on Weddington that is currently under construction right now. As a company, Casey's employs about 10,500 full-time employees and a little bit more, about 14,000 or so part-time employees. They try to offer good benefits to their employees. They offer their full-time employees access to health insurance and a retirement plan. They match contributions to a retirement plan. So they try to provide good, good-paying, good-benefit jobs to their employees, and that certainly is true to the employees here in Arkansas. One of the trademarks of Casey's that some of you may be aware of is their focus on foods that are prepared onsite. Their new constructions, they cook donuts onsite, they make excellent pizza. I don't know if anyone has had an opportunity yet to taste any of the pizza they make there, but it's good, it's made onsite, made from scratch, and they're constantly looking at ways to expand that line of food. They look to provide fresh-made sandwiches as well and a number of other different foods that make it attractive as a location in the community. So they try and do that. Mr. Williams, he provided a good overview of the offers that were made. Casey's certainly is interested, and while they were hopeful certainly that perhaps consideration of their offer tonight, they certainly recognize, given the different parties who are competing and would like to have an opportunity to purchase the location, they understand that and certainly support that option of tabling it and the sealed bid process that was outlined. They are supportive of that, and perhaps if that is the route that the council chooses to take, we can get a representative here to perhaps answer some more questions about the more day-to-day operations of Casey's and how they operate. I'm happy now, though, to attempt to answer any questions that you all may have.
Questions?
Can you tell us about your sustainability programs?
I apologize, I don't have that information with me, so I'm not able to speak for it, but I will certainly make sure that information gets provided to the council for their consideration should they choose to table this option and go with the sealed bids.
In the food preparation area of the stores, is there any incorporation of local food products? Are you buying from local farmers, or is this national?
That's an excellent question, and again, I apologize, I don't have the answer for that, but I'll be sure that we get that information to you.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Yes.
And just one more thing, if you would also, when you come back, should we decide to table this, talk a little bit about the buffering that you would do as well. I think you're very interested.
Absolutely. And you've probably seen in the offers, the landscape plan that Casey's is willing to entertain into the landscape plan and pay for that, the way it would be maintained is laid out in the offer, but they certainly recognize the importance of that and are behind doing that.
Appreciate that very much. Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, does anybody else want to give us a presentation tonight on that? Anybody new? Okay, let's open it up for some public comment, then. Who would like to be first?
My name's Johnny Walker. I'm a lifelong resident of Fayetteville. I have property at 1037 Happy Hollow Row and 1045, they're two eight-plex apartment buildings. And I've kind of got mixed feelings about the whole situation, you know. I think, you know, I feel like as far as a business, for my business, it would be a good thing to have this piece of property become active again. It's been an ISO, I've been to the city a couple of times, code compliance, and we've had a roundabout with the situation there. It's been rectified somewhat, but now it's getting, it's, you know, starting to deteriorate from the inside. On the process here, one question I do have for Kit. If you table this and you go to the sealed bids, and I forget the gentleman's names, but they, in between this three-week period, they say, "The heck with you. We're not going to put a bid in." Do these offers still, are these offers still good?
From a legal point of view, until the offer is accepted by the city council, then it's just an offer, and certainly they can walk away from it if they want to. You know, obviously, even after, even if they make a signed offer, they will pay earnest money, and they still have some options to not go forward if there's problems that they would find. I think because of the fact this is a very good location for both businesses, and they're both interested, I would think the likelihood that both entities would want to walk away from this is fairly low, but that's always, you know, there's no guarantee, like there's no guarantee the city council is going to sell the property. So, you know, it's, nothing is really in stone yet, and so that's all, you know, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Well, that was basically it. In other words, their offer is, if you, it sounds like you have, it's almost like it's a little dice game you're playing here. You can either accept what's on the table now, or you can hope that the pot gets a little sweeter, but, and the other question I had was, are these 24, are these 24/7 establishments?
I thought of that, too. I wish I'd asked that.
Need to ask them.
Y'all, what would y'all like to do? Why don't you come back up to the microphone where we can get it?
Yes, we are. 24 hours.
Casey's as well, they operate different locations, are different ways, but they do have 24/7 locations, and my understanding is that they anticipate this would be a 24/7 location. And if I may just address, I can speak for Casey's, their interest in this, they don't have any intention of withdrawing from this process should the resolution to table these and accept sealed bids proceed. That is certainly an option that we would support, so we don't have any intention of withdrawing from that should that be what the council decides.
Okay. Johnny?
One last thing. Sarah, you brought up a point about that a concern also is the, and that's why I asked for the 24/7 verification, is the light at night for my residents in my apartment buildings is, there's some kind of a situation that that'll be a negative, and if so, what kind of, you were asking about lighting, so that was another concern I had. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this? Okay, I'm going to ring back to the council then. All right, what's the wishes of the council? Wait a minute, Sarah, you.
Oh, I have one more question for them. Is it too late?
No, 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 that's fine.
He raised a good point about the 24 hours. I used to spend many years living next door to a 24-hour grocery store, and, you know, the dumping of the trash at 5:00 a.m., the deliveries all night long was a constant issue. Can you guys talk a little bit about how you would handle those situations in order to preserve the peace and quiet of the neighborhood?
Who would like to go first?
Well, I think trash, isn't trash, Mayor, is that the city? This is local trash pickup. We can't control that. We do have our own transport service which delivers the fuel. We can control when we drop fuel.
And what about all the groceries, you know, the refrigerated trucks with the compressors that are quite loud?
Typically, yeah, typically that's during the day, so.
Typically, could we get a guarantee of that?
Yeah, we could set guidelines on when it can be delivered and when it can't be delivered. Yeah, that's fine. We have quite a few vendors, so, I mean, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will be bringing the sustainability manager with me, actually, next, or three Tuesdays.
As I indicated, Casey's operates stores on both models, and they're certainly open to recommendations or concerns that the council has about this particular location. If they would prefer to see it one way or another, they're certainly willing to try to accommodate those desires.
Okay. And so?
I would like to make sure we table the resolution as outlined by the city attorney's memo.
And Mark, you want to do the sealed bids and all that, that option, correct?
I want it directly as.
What option is that? I'm sorry.
Option three.
Option three.
And I have given that memo to Casey's, and I will provide it to Come and Go, so they'll see exactly what was stated.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Give a second.
We have a moment? Did we get a second? I'm sorry. Who's second?
And that's to table to the next meeting, correct?
Okay. Any final comments before we vote? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottler?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. What announcements do we have?
Yes, we actually, thank you, Mayor, for the reminder. The mayor, myself, Director of Communications and Media Relations, as well as four council members will be attending the Arkansas Municipal League Winter Conference tomorrow through Friday. Outside of that, the city will still be running and in good hands with our staff, and the remaining four council members, if you have any issues during that time period.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Ward four will meet at 6:00 p.m. on the last Monday of the month, which is January 28th, here at City Hall.
Okay.
We're excited to have a couple of staff members from the city speaking there, so I encourage Ward four to show up.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.